Please take your seats. Quiet in the chambers. Mr. Shannon, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. City Council members. In 2010 -- I'm sorry. In 2010, the city enacted Long Beach Municipal Code Chapter 5.87 to regulate medical marijuana collectives by creating a permit scheme to both allow the cultivation and use of medical marijuana and protect public health and safety. 5.87 required each collective to obtain a permit and comply with specific regulations such as operational requirements and location restrictions, again, to protect public health and safety. In an effort to enjoin enforcement of the city's ordinance and permit process, patients of medical marijuana collectives filed PAC-Ed All versus City of Long Beach. The lawsuit, in essence, alleged that Section 5.7 permitted or compelled conduct prohibited by the Federal Controlled Substances Act, CSA, and was therefore preempted by state law.
Excuse me. Let him make his presentation. If he makes a mistake, we got the idea. Go ahead.
He's correct. It was federal law. The Court of Appeal reviewed the PAC case specifically to resolve the following issue: whether the city's ordinance, which permits and regulates medical marijuana collectives rather than merely decriminalizing specific acts, is preempted by federal law. On October 4th, 2011, the Court of Appeal issued its decision in the PAC case. The court determined that the city's permitting scheme to regulate medical marijuana was preempted by federal law. The decision struck down the core of the city's ordinance and bars any permit scheme for medical marijuana. The court states, "Federal law prohibits the possession and distribution of marijuana. There is no exception for medical marijuana." Quote, "The conclusion is inescapable. The permits instead authorize the operation of collectives by those which hold them. As such, the permit provisions, including the substantial application fees and renewal fees, are federally preempted." In other words, the court is saying that a permit to conduct this activity by its nature affirmatively allows that activity. Since the possession and distribution of medical marijuana is a crime, according to the court, the city cannot permit or regulate it. The PAC decision effectively forbids the city from enacting any affirmative measure regulating medical marijuana to protect public health and safety. Therefore, the city cannot do anything that would affirmatively promote the sale, possession, or distribution of marijuana, including requiring a permit as a condition of operating in the city, adopting regulations related to the implementation of a lottery system in order to create buffers between sensitive land uses, such as schools or parks, and a dispensary. The city may not adopt regulations that would lead to the issuance of a permit to allow a medical marijuana cultivation site. It may not issue building, construction, or health permits that would facilitate the operation of a collective or cultivation site. It may not adopt regulations establishing fees in order to recoup the cost of staff time or expense related to the permitting or monitoring of a collective or cultivation site. The city may not conduct inspections of any medical marijuana site that would in any way suggest that the city was permitting or acknowledging the legitimacy of a site. For example, an electrical inspector inspecting for the adequacy of an electrical system in a dispensary would, after a certain point in time, presumably find that those electrical requirements were met. At that point in time, he would sign off on the dispensary. That would be an affirmative act, according to this court, that is prohibited by federal law. That inspector, as you will see, under this court's ruling, so far as this court was concerned, could conceivably be subject to criminal prosecution for a violation of federal law. The city may not require the testing of a medical marijuana product to ensure the product is safe for consumption, and the city may not limit the number of collectives in any given area or council district. Keeping in mind that these affirmative regulations and permitting rules were enacted to ensure public health and safety, this decision effectively removes the ability of the city to regulate dispensaries in a manner consistent with public health and safety. And, in fact, the prosecutor has suspended all criminal actions against dispensaries not complying with the ordinance. Parenthetically, in reaching this decision, the court gave great weight to the position of the U.S. Attorney General to support its conclusion that a permitting scheme is preempted by federal law. On November 11th, four California U.S. Attorneys jointly reiterated that, under federal and state law, for-profit dispensaries are illegal. This is an important point to remember. Although the issue is not actually discussed in PAC, because PAC applies to all dispensaries, whether for profit or not for profit, totally apart from PAC, the law is clear: all for-profit dispensaries are illegal under federal and state law. And if you have any doubts, I just direct your attention to California Health and Safety Code, the section cited in this subsection here, that clearly indicates that the Compassionate Use Act does not justify or make legal for-profit dispensaries. Moreover, the court suggested that individual members of the city council and city employees involved in the permit process may be subject to federal criminal prosecution for aiding and abetting a criminal offense. How do we formulate this conclusion? It states in a footnote, "There may be an issue of whether the ordinance requires certain city officials to violate federal law by aiding or abetting or facilitating a violation of the federal CSA." The significance of this statement is not clear, admittedly, but I will tell you that I serve on a medical marijuana committee for the League of California Cities, and I know for a fact that all city attorneys up and down the state who have medical marijuana issues have advised their client of this statement in this case. On November 10th, the city filed a petition for review with the State Supreme Court. In the interim, based on PAC, the city may not affirmatively regulate medical marijuana but can declare dispensaries unlawful in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. In response to the Court of Appeal opinion in the PAC case, the city council requested the following action by the city attorney's office. First, to file a petition for review by the California Supreme Court, which, as I say, we did. We filed it on November 10th. We have received letters supporting review of that petition, in other words, supporting the request that the Supreme Court review this decision, by the League of California Cities, the City of Los Angeles, and the League of Counties. As to Number Two and Number Three, we were requested to draft an ordinance repealing Chapter 5.87 and to draft an ordinance banning dispensaries in the city. This we have done. The city attorney believes, and we have strong support from the police department, that since this decision effectively eliminates the ability of the city to regulate dispensaries, a ban on all dispensaries is necessary, at least until the Supreme Court clarifies the law in this area. That concludes my report.
Mr. Shannon, any questions or discussion behind the rail? Is there a motion by anyone? You can ask a question. Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Johnson.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, I appreciate the presentation. There has been another option presented by some of the people in the audience here, and I'd like, I guess, to hear from you, your professional opinion. Under the PAC decision, is that option legally permissible or not at this time?
It's simply stated, in my legal opinion, that that option is clearly not permissible. If you look at what they've referred to as the third option, it purports to keep in effect the permitting sequence that clearly this Court of Appeal has outlawed. You cannot have a permitting scheme under this Court of Appeal's decision.
Okay. And also, I guess, for our chief of police, I know one concern in the past from some residents and something actually some of the people here may have brought up, is we have not seen a lot of enforcement, for whatever reason. I know there are some legitimate reasons for that, but some of the dispensaries that had not won the lottery, for example, were not shut down. Going forward, if the city were to adopt this ordinance, do you feel that you'd be able to enforce it, or is that going to be a challenge moving forward?
If the city were to keep it on the books as it is? Is that the question?
No. If the city were to adopt Mr. Shannon's suggested ordinance--
For a ban.
Do you feel, for a ban--
Right.
Do you feel that you'd be able to enforce that ban?
Yes, we would.
And I guess, could you maybe just explain how maybe it would be easier to enforce this, or--
Yeah. Right now, we're in a gray area. If there's a ban in the City of Long Beach, then that gives us the ability, then, to pursue those who are selling it against the law. As it currently stands, the area is sufficiently gray where we're not able to do the job that much of the public expects.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Loewen though.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for your presentation. I know it took us a couple of years to get to this point. I know Councilmember Garcia was also very involved in helping us craft where we are today and has serious interest in this. And I'm wondering if I may indulge, if the council would indulge me in perhaps putting over this item until we can have a full complement--
Oh, no. No.
That's a motion that I would make.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All right. We have a motion and a second to put this item over. We're going to have to hear testimony, so we're not going to go through this again. We have a motion to put it over. I can ask you, if you testify, you're going to have to, unless there's a substitute motion somewhere, you're going to have to testify on putting it over, not on the issue.
We don't have a January 3rd meeting, and we have a January 10th meeting. So, January 10th.
But you have a big item on January 10th. The downtown plan.
Okay. January 17th.
You know, I think, thank you, Vice Mayor, for this motion, because I think it is critical. I mean, this is something that we have worked on for two years. This case coming up is unfortunate for the process, but I think that having the opportunity for every single council member to commit to being here is really important for the future decision. So, I ask for your support.
Mr. DeLong.
Question for the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, when would you anticipate hearing back from the Supreme Court?
Sixty to ninety days. Understand, I believe the newspaper reported that there would be a decision in the Supreme Court. That was a misunderstanding of a statement I made. Within the next sixty to ninety days, the Supreme Court will decide whether to take the case. If they, obviously, if they don't take the case, that's it for this case. If they do accept the case, given the number of cities that have expressed an interest, including statewide organizations, I would expect it would take about a year for the case to resolve itself.
Mr. DeLong.
Thank you. Couple points here. What's this business about me going to jail?
On which issue?
Honestly, Mr. City Attorney, you suggested that somehow the council could be held criminally responsible--
No, I did not suggest it. The Court of Appeal suggested it.
Hold on. Sloane, could I finish? Okay. And I'm not, listen--
Quiet, please.
Let's take a step back here and give me the information. I need to make the decisions I need to make.
Okay. Look at page thirteen.
Let me finish. Please. Okay. There was some discussion brought forward tonight about the council potentially being held criminally responsible. Gives me concern. I don't want to go to jail. All right? I'm going to lose my job, and other bad things are going to happen to me. So, could you discuss that?
Sure. Look at page 13 of our handout.
Where's your handout? This one?
Now, this was a statement made by the Court of Appeal in PAC, and it was significant enough that the Medical Marijuana Committee of the League of California Cities issued an opinion that found that this particular statement was particularly troubling. What I'm doing is repeating for you what the Court of Appeal said. You can draw your own conclusions as to the likelihood of something occurring. Nevertheless, the Court of Appeal said that. As your attorney, I'm duty-bound to tell you that the Court of Appeal did say that. You can draw your own conclusions as to what's going to happen as a result of that statement.
So, give me an example of what could happen.
The Court of Appeal suggests that because this permitting scheme affirmatively permits a criminal activity under federal law, a federal prosecutor could prosecute any city employee who took affirmative action to approve the dispensary, including city council members who approved the ordinance.
So, in my approving this ordinance, I could be sending myself to jail?
That's what the Court of Appeal said.
And I should be worried about that, right?
Well, if I were you--
Please have orders here.
If I were you, I would be concerned. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Well, that alone gives me concern. You know, I don't want Mr. DeLong as my cellmate.
We agree on that.
It would be an interesting enterprise. Okay. So, with that, thank you. So, again, federal law, I think the supremacy clause is key here, because federal law trumps local law. That's really the situation we're faced with right now, correct?
In this particular case, that is true, and actually, we're talking more about state law. That is correct.
Okay. And so, your strong recommendation this evening is to adopt the recommendation, which I guess is your recommendation to us, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, I'll move that, and I'll--
Leave it at that, and we can hear some public discussions.
That's a substitute motion to adopt the recommendation of the city attorney--
Correct.
--seconded by Councilmember Shifsky.
Correct.
You want--
I just, I wanted-- Excuse me.
You know, if you're going to continue this, we'll have you removed. That's all there is to it. We're not going to allow that. We're going to give everybody an opportunity to talk. You remain civil, or you leave. Councilmember Shifsky.
Mr. Shannon, if, in fact, well, first of all, I'm a little puzzled that the council would delay any kind of action on this, since it was this council who directed you to write this ordinance and to bring it before us tonight. So, I'm a little puzzled about that. Secondly, if we, in fact, do approve this tonight, is there any opportunity to, because my understanding is this would become effective immediately, is there any opportunity to delay so that there's, not delay, but delay the enactment date, so that people get fair notice and that this would be occurring, so that it's not instantaneous at the moment we walk out of here?
Absolutely. Sure.
And is there any reasonable period of time that, because I'm wondering if the maker of this motion would be amenable to that, that we put that in the motion? Because if we vote on it, we then don't want to fool around with the timing. What would be a reasonable period of time to prevent the immediate enactment of this, but also giving notice and not certainly delaying it out at any point--
Well, my understanding that thirty days would be a reasonable period of time to delay actual implementation of the ordinance.
So, if the maker of the motion would agree to that, that if, in fact, this council does approve the ban, that there would be, it would not take effect until thirty days from the time of the vote? Good.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney, I think you too have a copy. I'm, you know, my questions have always been very consistent, and even if you give me the same answer, I would just like to hear it again. How is it that, for instance, Ms. Greenwood, we all know Joan Greenwood, who is an environmental scientist locally and a resident, handed out a document regarding Maine's medical use marijuana program, and as a state, how they've gotten into the business of allowing select dispensaries? How is it that we're so acutely affected and prohibited, and others, even in our own state, will go about their business as they are today, such as Richmond and Oakland? Could you explain that? Why are we, at this point today, we as Long Beach, as opposed to anybody else?
First of all, this case is seen as very significant up and down the state. I keep referring to the Medical Marijuana Committee, but it consists of city attorneys all over the state, and they find that this case is very significant, and many cities are seeking to comply with the mandate of PAC. But Long Beach is in a unique situation. Long Beach must comply with the requirements of PAC, because Long Beach is a party to the case. Now, the law in California has admittedly not been consistently applied. This very Court of Appeal indicates that they don't completely agree with some other courts of appeal. So, let's say if I'm in the city of Weed, just to pick a city--
Go ahead.
No pun entitled, no pun intended. I might choose to take another Court of Appeal opinion as dispositive law on the subject and choose to ignore PAC. I think there's a significant risk to doing that, but at least you could make, you could take that position reasonably. The City of Long Beach cannot, because we're a party to the case. We are required, we as the City of Long Beach are required to comply with the mandates of the case, because we are a party. Other cities are not.
I appreciate that response. Thank you.
Councilmember Gabluch.
Does PAC demand that we issue a ban, or do they even recommend it?
PAC implies that a ban is appropriate. They do not specifically say you must issue a ban. My point with regard to that is, though, you'll recall that for almost two years, we struggled with this ordinance, and the compromise that we came up with was, yes, we would allow dispensaries, but only, only if the city were permitted to effectively regulate their existence in order to comply with necessary needs of public health and safety.
Correct.
My point is, this court, by eliminating our ability to effectively regulate these dispensaries, has essentially forced us to ban them in order to protect public health and safety.
So, then, if there were a, let's call it a moratorium, until it reaches the State Supreme Court, it could be put on hold so that the two years of work on this, and I hate reading it called "a permit scheme," it was a permit process. A scheme is a very negative, negative word. The other part, we've known what federal law is, but we also were paying attention to there are sixteen other states that have similar laws, and the comment by the Attorney General that said that they would, if I'm paraphrasing this, respect the state's individual laws. So, we haven't seen anything to the contrary. So, to jump, you know, to jump through this hoop is taking back a lot of work that, on both sides of the fence, you know, and then to say, well, you know, once it's dissolved, or once it's resolved, then we can come back and do it all over again. I think that's not the way we should be doing business. And I also think that when you, you know, two of the greatest motivators are fear and anger. And, you know, I think that to say that this is instilling fear in council members that think maybe we're going to be sent to jail, you know, I think there's probably a number of things we should be concerned about.
Well, I take issue with that. I never said that you were going to be sent to jail. What I'm doing is my duty as your attorney. I have a legal obligation to tell you what the court said. You don't have to agree with the court, but I have the legal obligation to let you know what risks are involved. When a Court of Appeal tells you that there is a risk that a federal prosecutor might bring an action against you, I'm duty-bound, whether I believe that's going to happen or not. I'm duty-bound to let you know that. If I don't do that, I'm not complying with my legal obligation.
And, Mr. Shannon, I do appreciate that, but, you know, every time, I mean, when this all started, you, you know, you took a very strong stand on the federal law preempts the state law. And so, even recognizing that, we honored or tried to honor the intent of the state law. And I'd like to see that we continue to do this. I mean, three times, we have amended this ordinance, at least three times. You know, so I think that, you know, I'd like to, again, suggest, first of all, there's a couple of issues on the table. The first one is, every council member should have a voice in this, and that includes Council Member Garcia. So, I really, I mean, I don't care if it's on the 20th of December, or the 10th of January, or the 17th of January, but I think we have an obligation to the public and to the process to hold this over until that time. And then, the other part is, I don't think being fearful, I don't think this is, I don't think that we should be taking such drastic measures prior to hearing whether or not the Supreme Court is going to hear this case.
Mr. DeLong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question regarding the process. On the original motion to defer it, you had mentioned that all the public comment would be on that motion. So, then, when it came back again, say, on January 20th, then we would have a meeting that we'd have all the public comment again on the issue at hand. Now that we have a substitute motion for Mr. O'Donnell, will we just have one meeting, then, as far as we'll record all the public comment now, and then, for some reason, should that motion fail and we went to the original motion and it got deferred, then it would just be a meeting on the issues rather than a full meeting with public comment? What's the process?
What we've done before, Mr. DeLong, on an issue like this, assuming this goes forward to a vote, we will hear substantive public comment. I'll instruct everybody, they're limited to three minutes. They should not be repetitive. If there's too many people in line, we'll have to narrow that down. If, for some reason, it were put over, or there was an indeterminate vote here, and it came up again, what we've done in the past is we've limited to council discussion unless there's a brand-new issue, and that's what we will do here. Thank you. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, in your opinion, what's the danger, if any, in allowing the ordinance to continue in its current state until after the Supreme Court?
Well, the ordinance cannot continue in its current state. The ordinance has effectively been emasculated, so that any action to repeal the ordinance is really a given. The issue before you is whether or not you need to go forward after that and enact a ban, but effectively, the ordinance is gone, based upon this particular decision, or at least until, at least until the Supreme Court rules otherwise.
So, I think the question is, what's the consequence of that?
Right. Exactly.
The consequence is that this ordinance is not enforceable.
What would happen, what could possibly happen in the city that would prompt us to take other action? I think that's Mr. Neal's thrust of his question.
Well, the point is that you have an interim period of time in which there is effectively nothing regulating medical marijuana dispensaries for a period of approximately one year. I believe your police department will tell you, and I don't necessarily need to speak for them, but I believe they will tell you that public health and safety requires that there be something in place, in this case, a ban, in order to ensure that dispensaries, that illegal activity does not occur at dispensaries.
So, just to be clear, what you're saying is that if, given the fact that the court has eviscerated the ordinance, there's no ability to regulate this, that should no action be taken, or if we just repealed the ordinance with nothing else, you'd have no ability to limit or otherwise regulate the location of dispensaries, new ones, old ones, it wouldn't matter?
That's correct.
Mr. Chief McDonald, do you have any other questions? Do you want to add anything to that?
No. I would agree with the city attorney. That's the position the police department is in currently.
Okay. Mr. Neal, does that answer your question? Well, continue then.
Oh, moving forward, then, if what you're saying is true, so we cannot regulate those dispensaries that were awarded the lottery in the current condition, is that what you're saying to me?
We have nothing in place to ban them or otherwise approve of them. It's just simply, we fall back to the period of time before we ever enacted this ordinance, where basically dispensaries were free to do whatever they were going to do, come into existence, operate, whatever.
And then, from, when it comes to the amount of monies invested by these individuals, what would be, what would be our obligation to them at that point?
Well, I believe that one thing that I left out in my presentation is that I believe that you also directed that any fees that were paid incidental to the ordinance be refunded, that, of course, would occur. Beyond that, the money's expended. This Court of Appeal has said that these are criminal enterprises, and no one has a vested right in expecting to conduct a criminal enterprise.
Yeah, Mr. Shannon, can we proceed on that line of questioning a little bit, because I think it needs to be clear to everyone. The court has indicated that we have no legal right to regulate that which actually is prohibited by the federal law, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, regardless of whether or not we act tonight to ban them, outright ban them, going forward, my understanding is that law enforcement can take action against anyone who is operating any of these entities, because, first of all, the city is not allowing them, because we're not allowed to allow them or regulate them, and secondly, it's been indicated under the court ruling that this is not a legal activity.
Well, a ban would simply be another tool in the city's tool chest to effectively close down dispensaries which this Court of Appeal has said are operating illegally.
Right, but that would be under a business license scenario currently, correct? In other words, they, you're-
No, actually, it wouldn't be really a business license scenario. It would be a criminal offense under the municipal code to exist, and it would be very, very simple for the police department to close these dispensaries down. It would be very easy to prosecute those dispensaries that remained open, because they'd be clearly in violation of an ordinance in effect.
Okay, so, but let's go a step further. If in fact we take no action, and I think Mr. Neal was asking that, or, and this ordinance, which is actually made null and void by the court ruling, then what in fact action can our police department, if they so chose to do, would take against any entity, since because we, they're not legal in the city, because we can't permit them? I mean, the conundrum here is, if they're not legal, whether or not we revoke this ordinance-
The conundrum is that they're illegal under federal law, and therefore, they cannot exist under federal law. Whether the federal prosecutors are gonna come in and prosecute these dispensaries or not, we don't really know. Answer is probably not, because they've had a very spotty record of enforcing or not enforcing, depending upon the particular area of the state or the country. That leaves the city with very little option in terms of regulating and seeing to it that criminal activity does not occur at these dispensaries. That's why we enacted the ordinance in the first place, to remind you. On the one hand, you wanted to permit folks that needed medical marijuana, to get them through these collectives. You made it very clear that they could not be for profit, but you also made it very, very clear that they needed to be tightly regulated. Well, this particular Court of Appeal has taken away your ability to tightly regulate these dispensaries. Having done that, it is our suggestion, city attorney and the Long Beach Police Department, that in the interim period, these dispensaries need to be banned. By banning them, you will, you will bring about a simple way for law enforcement to see that they cease to exist during this interim period, and the public's health and safety is protected.
I understand that, and then again, without an ordinance allowing to regulate what has occurred actually in the last month or so, there's been some entities opening, that have opened up. They've opened up in Mr. DeLonge's district, they've opened up in other places, and so what is the impact of the city being able to say, no, you can't do that, when in fact, we had already indicated only a certain permitted group could?
Well, all dispensaries will immediately be required to close, or at least at whatever time you decided to enforce an ordinance imposing a ban, and at that point, law enforcement can close, could close them down. It would be, in law enforcement's opinion, a very effective means of seeing to it that dispensaries don't exist in this interim period.
I guess what I'm still struggling with is, if we in fact don't do anything on this, then it's going to actually send a very strong message saying, anyone in any place, including near schools, parks, whatever, can locate, is that correct?
That's basically, that's basically true, and we refer to the Wild West days before the ordinance was enacted. You recall, the need to enact the ordinance was not just to provide medical marijuana dispensaries for those that needed it, but also to see to it that they were very tightly regulated. If you do nothing, effectively, we move back to those Wild West days.
And I, if I can further on, if in fact we move to ban these collectives, and by the way, according to Attorney General's language in California, dispensaries are not a legally recognized entity, only cooperatives and collectives are. But if we move on that, then what impact does this have on the Compassionate Care Use Act? Will?
Well, those that are otherwise subject to the Compassionate Use Act would not be subject to criminal prosecution under state law.
And that would be as long as they had the medical recommendation card, and it was their primary caregiver?
As long as they comply with the requirements of state law.
And one of the things that I, I don't know if the PAC case spoke on this, but I was reading the Attorney General's guidelines on this whole issue, and the Attorney General indicated that one of the difficulties and the concerns about collectives is that, well, let me get back to primary caregiver. The primary caregiver under the Compassionate Use Act has to be someone who has provided housing, health, and safety prior to providing medical marijuana, is that correct?
That is correct. By the way, the Attorney General's in the process-
She's revising.
-with, revising those guidelines.
Yeah, she is. And then the other issue was, and, you know, I don't know quite the case on this, but my understanding is that there's actually a case law in California, that this is one of the problems about the collectives, that business owners cannot serve as primary caregivers, because they in fact have not given housing, health, and safety care to the hundreds of people that sign up, and that that is one of the concerns that we've heard repeatedly back at the city council. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Shannon, I'd like to ask a question. What does the State Attorney General say about our case here?
The State Attorney General's not appined on our case, and actually, they, however they appined, if they did, it would have little effect. The Court of Appeal's decision is the decision that we have to comply with. And let me emphasize that, in a way, this PAC decision is good in this, for everybody, in the sense that it's finally addressed a core issue that has been ignored, or at least dealt with inconsistently by various courts of appeals, and because it's addressed this issue, and because it's very clear that now we have conflicts in the courts of appeals, I'm hopeful that the Supreme Court will take the case, and that a year from now, we'll have clarity in the law, something we don't have now.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. You know, I really definitely feel very strongly with our Vice Mayor, because the fact that, you know, we are elected by, you know, city, you know, by our constituents, and I think we need our whole disis here to really respond on this, because this is very important. I don't think there will be any issue, you know, becoming now in the end of the year, dealing with marijuana. So, I think right now, we may not need our whole, you know, all nine of our council people here to speak on this. I don't know how long it's gonna take, but however long it's take, that's our job. We're supposed to listen and be a part of it.
Okay. We'll take, we'll take public comment. I'm gonna, we have a lot of people, we're gonna try to hear everybody. We have a motion on the ban, it was already made. So, what I want you to do is, is to, please, don't be repetitive. We've heard this issue a lot, we understand it. Try to be succinct and straight to the point. I'm gonna try to get everybody in. Please identify yourselves.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could we be very, very clear on the ground rules, so that nobody can claim that they've been misled? If in fact you hear public comment, and at some point in time, that substitute motion puts this over, are you going to permit these people to speak all over again?
No, I may, I may, look, I may real, hear the ground rules. We're gonna hear substantive comments now. You can all make your substantive comments, subject to the rules I just gave you. Please, try to be mindful of the time, make your points succinctly. We've heard a lot of testimony on this. If in fact, for some reason, this doesn't get decided tonight, and gets held over, it will be for council decision only, unless there's some new, something new in this, in that we have to hear comments on.